Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. This is the Board of Select meeting of 10 December 2013. A number of topics today, including appointment of police officers, and adjustments in dog license fees, adoption of a Massachusetts law concerning the sale of liquor on Sundays. We're going to be going over a number of our ongoing infrastructure projects, talking about some of the issues and status there. Talk about a couple of capital budget matters, and a variety of other things as well. Just a couple of announcements. One, on the good news side, Town Treasurer reports that Standard and Poor's upgraded our bond rating from A-plus to AA, and the significance of that is a positive impact on our potential borrowings. And to remind folks of an upcoming event, Mr. Peter Racklebusch is here. Pete?
Good.
Come on up.
Well, Hatfield's Night to Shine coming up 22nd of December, Sunday. It's the 33rd annual Hatfield Luminarian. A little bit different this year because you guys have renovated the town hall downstairs, which was the backup room in case of rain. That's the only thing that really, I mean, high winds can make a mess of it, but it'd be very hard to have the brass ensemble playing outside at 6 o'clock. I know you can't make any decisions now, but I just, you know, there's no backup space. I tried senior council on aging to use their space downstairs, but they don't want to do that, so we don't have a backup in case of rain. So if it's raining, the only thing I can do is say that the thing out front will be canceled.
Any possibility, not to...
Yeah, no.
Any possibility coordinating with the elementary school and on the grounds?
Yeah, I guess...
It's your call.
Yeah. Well, right now, it'll be that in case of rain or severe weather, outside the town hall won't happen, because it's not fair to put the kids through standing in the rain for half hour, and, you know, Santa arriving, plus no, really not many people are going to come. But outside of that, refreshments and holiday story time at the Hatfield Public Library at 5:00. And townwide candle lighting complete at 5:45. That way, folks who are coming from out of town, which we know a lot do, and check with the police chief, it's okay that they come with dimmed headlights. Anybody can drive in town that evening with dimmed headlights, safely of course. So the holiday program at town halls is 6:00, if weather allowing us, which there's a two out of three, it works. There's only problems one out of three times, some kind of problems. The worst is when the outlets from the brass ensemble for their lights on their music stands were all on the ground, and it started to drizzle, and then the rain got a little heavier one year, and I was thinking, well, before we blow all the lights out in the town hall. Paul, I don't know if somebody, or Phil, I don't know if somebody's going to do the decorating the bushes outside this year. It didn't happen last year for some reason. Anyway, there are lights to decorate the bushes. It really does make the town hall look pretty, plus putting the candle lights in the windows. Maybe Cherry was in charge of that once upon a time, but maybe we can get that to happen.
Janitor usually took care of it.
Well, whoever, you know. I know one year we had a problem with the light not going on up top, shining down, all these little details. So the caroling with the Smith Academy Brass Band in front of the town hall, concluding with a visit from Santa. And I'll throw this out to you, too. Santa's offered this year to sit somewhere and have folks, the kids obviously, sit on his lap and do a Santa asking questions thing. But again, now there's really no place to do that unless it's in the office, which we chatted about yesterday, Key said, well, it's up to you guys, you know. If there's a little bit of a logistics problem, because the band's all leaving, and getting the kids up into the office, but he could sit there, we could set up a little Christmas tree or something and make it pretty in the office. And they could come and visit, because there's no, oh. This year again, there's no place for the fire station to have their cookie bake sale, coffee, et cetera, which they used to, so I just checked with Billy this morning, and he said not this year. So would that be okay? Can you make that kind of a decision, that it's all right to use the office for a sit on Santa's lap, or?
Why don't you, I suggest you talk to town administrator after this, and why don't you coordinate the potentially use of the entrance way for Santa, or the...
Yeah. Good, yeah. Anything else anybody can think of, I'm happy to hear, but, you know, Santa's offered, and that would be nicer than him just wandering outside. Maybe we can get the elves to give out the candy inside, or we'll figure something out. And then the ever charming 18th Annual Bell and Choral Concert at the Congregational Church at 7:00, with some preamble music starting at about 6:50. And then everybody's lights from north to south and east to west Hatfield, hopefully. Encourage folks to join in. Everywhere in town, it's Hatfield's Night to Shine. The media usually does come up, well, now that Key and Wilma are going to be helping, we'll get a, hopefully, a more widespread media press release about it, so. And we'll all hope for good weather.
Bring your umbrellas, Peter.
No, that's a bad omen.
Thank you very much. It's always a very nice ceremony. Are there any announcements? Anyone here for community forum? Lydia, would like to address our fees for dog license. Okay, first, Mike, come forward, please.
Hi.
Good morning, all.
I submitted to you a letter recommending that the dog fees, because our dog fees are
We're here seeking a blessing for the board. We have three slots to fill, and we did some extensive interviews around, I think we had
way out of whack with a lot of other towns, so I was recommending an increase in the
about 10 applications for three slots, and we ended up filling two of those slots with
dog fees, and I wanted to be able to submit that with the census information that goes out at the end of the year.
these two gentlemen, Nate Richards, who comes to us from Sunderland, lives in Sunderland,
But as I was doing some more research, there is some conflict between, when we adopted
and Patrick Gonzalez, who lives in Springfield. And we would like to have them appointed to fill part-time police officer positions.
Chapter 40, Section 22-F in 2002, that's a statute that basically allows a selectman
We have both our, both the resumes of these individuals.
to set fees.
Anyone have any questions for them, or comment?
And when I went to the conference in the fall, I specifically asked, does that apply
No, they look good.
And is there a motion to appoint to the Hatfield Police Mr. Patrick Gonzalez and
to the new part of the dog law that says that you can only increase fees through a
Mr. Nathan Richards?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
town vote?
Second. All in favor?
And they had said, yes, that covers you, you're okay, the selectman can raise the fee.
Aye. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard, gentlemen.
Well, then I got a couple of conflicting information from various town clerks. One had submitted it to town council, and they said, no, you have to go through a town vote to raise the fee if it says specifically in the statute that it's a town vote. Another one says, no, it specifically says in Chapter 40, Section 22-F, that it only applies to two sections of 140. So my suggestion to the board is that you vote to raise the dog fees, as I requested, subject to confirmation from town council, that my interpretation is correct. I think you may have the authority to do it under that chapter and section. The only part I don't know is that, floating out there somewhere in law land, that there's something that specifically says, if it's, the statute says it has to be a town vote, then it doesn't apply.
I could see a town meeting vote, but a town vote, the town...
Well, town meeting vote, yeah, that's what I mean.
It's, if it specifically says town meeting vote, then that's a whole...
No, it doesn't.
If it just says town vote, then the Board of Selectmen can vote that, a town vote.
So, well, you know, I'm hearing from a town clerk, but their town council said it has to be a town meeting vote, so.
I've got a question. We have the same issue on another...
I'd rather run it by town council before, you know, but if you make the vote, subject to town council's confirmation, that would be great. The other part of the new dog law is that there's a waiver fee for residents over 70 years of age, but you need to adopt Chapter 140, 139, at town meeting for this to take effect. So I was hoping that we could vote to do that, that people over 70 would still have to license their dog, but the fee would be waived.
Yes.
Chapter 140 what?
140, Section 139. So I would put that on the...
List for town...
Yeah, when I submit the things that, you know, for town warrant submissions, I'd put that on.
Lydia, I've got a question. When this was brought up, I asked about getting a report from the dog officer, finding out exactly how much we're spending out there, and that would, to me, make more sense on setting the fees, at what level that you're setting it at. Because let's say if the dog officer spends a lot of his time and it's X amount of dollars per year, then that should reflect in the fee schedule. So I think it should be also based on not just what other towns are charging, but something more tangent.
Those are fees that are collected by the town clerk. That's not where his salary's coming from.
I talked to...
But what I'm saying is, if the dog officer, which is in control of the dog license, you know, he's the one that has to enforce it. Dog doesn't have a license, he's coming back to you, or if he's got to go out and enforce a dog complaint.
The only thing that I'm aware of, that Scott does, is respond to a complaint. If a dog bites a child, or a dog is loose, on the loose or something, they call the dog officer. And as far as I know, that's all that he does. He does, he does not take a list of delinquent people and go chasing after people that haven't...
No, but that's what I'm...
That's what I, I send the letters and get after...
That's exactly what I'm saying, though. How much time does he spend doing that? If it's just minimal...
He said, he says he does not.
That's not in his job description, as far as I know. I didn't, I couldn't find a job description for him.
Not the licensing, but if there's a complaint, dog complaint, he's out there.
I did talk to Louise about them, because at her last meeting, I mentioned that she came in last year about these fees, and I think you did talk to her. She didn't want to raise them up too much, because what you're going to end up happening is people aren't going to come in and license their dogs. And who's going to go around checking everybody's dog's collar to see if they're licensed or not? So she said that's why she wanted to raise them, but not a lot. And she also said that going by the monies, we can't, it's basically illegal for us to charge to pay the dog officer. That's what she told me, so.
Well, we can recoup our losses on the amount of time that is spent dealing with the dog complaints and so on and so forth. You can set your fees based on that, on what actual costs are.
Yeah, that's a treasurer question, that's our wrong hat.
I think you're finding that fees can only be assessed for the cost, the actual cost, administrative cost, using the lowest salary, lowest salary person in the office handling the material, handling the matter administratively.
Yeah, and one of the things that's going to be coming up, or may be coming up, I'm limping along, is the dog program for keeping track of all this. It had a tough transition when we upgraded the computer. It's still working, there are glitches, so I can foresee at some point having to get a dog program, which, the one we have is kind of a homegrown program. It's not something you go out and buy, but if you go out and buy one, they're between $1,200 and $2,000, and then there's maintenance fees on top of that every year of between, like, $200 and $400, off the top of my head. So it's pretty expensive, and it's something, you know, we're not paying for now, but we may soon in the future have to be paying for something like that.
Is that something you could share with another community, two site licenses for one?
I don't know, I could look into it. I did, I did broach that subject, because I know the town of Orange and the town of Whately have the same homegrown program that we do, and they're looking into a new dog program. And I mentioned that to them, I haven't followed up yet to see how the meeting went with the programmer, but, you know, if they could do something like that, because it's not like we'd be calling them every day.
Okay. Any other questions?
I move that we increase the fees for male female dog to $15, for neutered spayed dogs for $10.
Good.
And penalty $2 a month for a late fee.
Can I make the suggestion? Oh, I see, I see. You're not, you're not changing any of the other? Okay.
No, it's just the 10 and the 15.
Would you care to amend that, subject to town council coordination?
Subject to, subject to town council.
Motion to approve the approval. Fee schedule change as submitted?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Labby?
Morning.
Labbies. We have an application for license to buy, sell, exchange, or assemble second-hand motor vehicles or parts thereof at 24 Lindsay Road. Like to speak to it, your proposal? There's a microphone right over here. Paul's got one right there.
Unless you have any questions, just wanted to buy and sell used cars according to the special stuff that was put on there with the regulations with the planning board. I didn't know if you had any other questions that weren't addressed in the planning board meeting.
I don't. Do you have any? Did you have any other?
Well, the concern that I have is the public hearing, okay? I remember that on some of these here, we had to have a public hearing, it's something like a poll hearing, where you invite the people in, just basically same as the planning board had.
We can do, just as we did here, and call it a subject two?
It's subject two, yeah. I just want to make sure that the law might have changed, okay, that I'm not up on, but I recall that we did hold public hearings, we held a public hearing out at the, I believe, for, what should we call it, Route 5.
That was because the individual had more vehicles there, and it was a complaint that the zoning enforcement officer reported.
But if it's up to us to regulate how many vehicles are going to be on that premises, okay? I know, in my case, I talked to some of the residents over there, and they would like to see no more than three cars on that premises for sale. So that's, you know, so the regulation of the cars, okay, is an issue. Planning board doesn't have any jurisdiction over setting the number of cars on the premises. They put a limit of seven, okay, but they don't have the jurisdiction over how many go on there. The Board of Selectmen does.
I understand.
It was two or three open public meetings in the planning board situation over this thing. And all the neighbors were there, they went through all of their situation, and in every regard, Chuck did exactly what they asked him to do, more than what they asked him to do. And then they chastised him for doing more than what they asked him to do. So I think another open, a public meeting is rather ridiculous. We've been through three, and everybody's had their complaints aired, and they were all, you know, the planning board came down with their edict. I mean, I don't, I don't understand any.
This is nothing to change what was done. This was only to determine how many cars are on the premises for sale.
Well, they put seven, and they put what, five?
Well, the planning board can't, can't tell the Board of Selectmen that there's going to be seven cars. That's not up to the planning board. They can regulate no more than seven, but it's up to us to approve whatever we want, okay, to that seven.
What's wrong with seven? I mean, that doesn't seem like a lot.
Well, when you have seven, okay, to me, and the location means a lot to me, okay? If I were one of the neighbors, I'd be concerned at how many cars are going to be. It's a business, it's been a body shop for years and years. To sell actual cars on that street, a residential section, is an issue. It's not like on Route 5. It's on a back street, it's on Lindsay Road, and you have to take the neighborhood into consideration.
Well, it was a used car facility for 50 years. Until my uncle let the license expire. He passed away unfortunately. Therefore, I couldn't grant, I couldn't be grandfathered within a three-year, whatever, I forget, somebody told me.
Two years.
Two years. So, and back then, there wasn't even any regulations on how many cars. And like Paul said, I've done everything that the neighbors have asked. And I've turned around and told the neighbors, and you were at the meeting, you know where the town hall is, if I'm in violation of something, you know, you're going to be the first one down there, I know that. So I did everything I said I was going to do three years ago, cleaned it up, have kept it clean, there's been zero complaints. And I planned to abide by what the planning board told me to do. And I'll be the first one to come down and complain about myself, because I understand the neighborhood.
Sure.
You know, I understand that, there's a lot of real nice houses around there.
But I just want to make it a point that it's not like it's on Route 5, and you're selling cars on Route 5, you're selling them on a residential street, it's a whole separate ballgame there.
Right, and I said in the meeting, this is not going to turn into, you know, what's his, what's his name's, right, that used to be Labby Auto Body, you know? There's not going to be tractor trailers, there's not going to be, you know, loudspeakers and microphones and all the, you know, streetlights, we already went through all of that. I thought I was pretty sensitive to...
I guess the only issue that I have is the number, the seven. I have a problem with that, and I think I stated that at the meeting.
Okay. Did you have any other?
No, I, I mean, seven vehicles, in reality, isn't all that much. I've been over there, and I looked over the area, and I don't, I don't, personally, I don't think the seven cars would take up too much space, or look out of place, I should say, compared, you know, I mean, I look at other areas in town where there are more vehicles than sometimes we even allow, you know, so.
I mean, he relined the lot, he did everything, you know, they went out and put the white lines on it, made sure it was lined for the number of cars, dropped the number of cars down from the original plan. I mean, it, you know, he did what he was supposed to do.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve, subject to legal coordination, an application for license to buy, sell, exchange, or assemble second-hand motor vehicles or parts thereof, as submitted by Mr. Charles A. Labby II, 24 Lindsay Road, to be effective 1 January 2014?
So moved.
With, with, I mean, he's asking for the seven cars?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm not in favor of that. I won't second it.
It's already second. I'll second, I'll second. He made the motion, I'll second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
If town attorney determines that this is supposed to be a public hearing, then we'll come back to the drawing board. This is contingent on...
It's not effective until 1 January, so we should have that in a day. You'll check.
Thank you.
Tim, Tony, you want to come forward? Next item has to do with Sunday liquor sales. Have an application from Grill and Shill concerning both Saturday and Sunday liquor sales. The first action the board needs to take, however, is to take up Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, Section 33B-12. And then we can address the other. We had, in some, back in 2010, August of 2010, we tabled adoption of this law. So is there a motion, to begin, is there a motion of the Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, Section 33B, regarding sales of alcoholic beverages by on-premise licensees on Sundays and certain legal holiday sales between 10:00 a.m. and 12:00 noon?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, taking, taking up the request of Grill and Shill.
Tony, you want to start at 10:00 in the morning, you said?
On Sunday?
I thought you said nine.
Nine o'clock on Saturday, or eight o'clock on Saturday. Right now, we can serve at nine, we want to switch it down to eight. Sundays, we want to go from noon, switch it down to 10:00. We were told that's the earliest we can go.
So there are two votes, we can separate them. One, setting aside what we just adopted, we could previously act on, the Saturday sales. Is there a motion to approve the Grill and Shill request to extend liquor license hours on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the Grill and Shill request to extend their liquor license hours on Sundays from 12:00 to 10:00 a.m.?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, taking, taking up the request of Grill and Shill.
Tony, you want to start at 10:00 in the morning, you said?
On Sunday?
I thought you said nine.
Nine o'clock on Saturday, or eight o'clock on Saturday. Right now, we can serve at nine, we want to switch it down to eight. Sundays, we want to go from noon, switch it down to 10:00. We were told that's the earliest we can go.
So there are two votes, we can separate them. One, setting aside what we just adopted, we could previously act on, the Saturday sales. Is there a motion to approve the Grill and Shill request to extend liquor license hours on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the Grill and Shill request to extend their liquor license hours on Sundays from 12:00 to 10:00 a.m.?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, good luck to you.
We'll sign it today.
Good to go this weekend. Or it's got to be approved by the...
Pardon? Okay.
Does it have to go back into Boston, be approved on that?
No, we approve.
Yeah, but I mean, does it have to be, does the ABC have to approve something like that?
No, not the way the law reads.
We'll find out.
Okay, we'll find out today. We'll sign, we'll do our part today.
If the ABC doesn't have to approve it, then you're all set to go. If they do, then it's going to be on there whenever they get it back to us. We'll find out for sure what the...
Thanks.
Thank you. Infrastructure, town hall. One thing we talked about last time was key control.
Pardon me?
Key control.
Yes.
I forgot whether it was town hall and/or the, or maybe it was the... I forgot whether it was Town Hall and/or the, or maybe it was the Emergency Services Building.
Yeah, there was a question about.
In any event, Town Council has come back. The Board of, Board of Selectmen will determine.
Yes.
The key, and there is no law regarding entry to police area. It's only concerns lockups and we use the Hampshire County lockup. That's the only thing that.
Right.
So that's a myth, let's get that out of the way.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, the project is, is moving along. The contract states that they are supposed to be substantially complete next week. I don't see that happening, though I haven't gotten any correspondence from the contractor, you know, looking for an extension. But yeah, they're sanding floors, they're starting to hang the ceiling, all the windows are in, so things are moving right along. But I don't think they're going to be substantially complete next week. But I need to get ahold of the architect today and see what's going on there. We had a discussion about the issue with the outside stairs. And there have been a number of change requests regarding that. As far as I know, they're complete. And in your packet is a change request number eight B from Maroy Construction for one thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents. So we've already had discussion about this. But I just want to clarify, there were two issues with the stairs. One was the contractor's responsibility and the other one was really the architect's error, I guess I'll call it. As far as the contractor pouring, you know, the, the steps not to the specifications, that whole issue has been taken care of. There's no question that we have no responsibility as far as that is concerned. The other issue, the plan that the architect put together was, was essentially rejected by the building inspector for code reasons. There should have been a railing attached to the building. Well, his original design did not have the railing in there. The building inspector said, you have to put a railing in there. The other problem with the design is that he had it so you would enter in to the steps directly from the driveway and the building inspector said, no, that's no good. He rejected that. So we had to, the architect had to go back and kind of redesign the thing so that it headed out towards the back of the parking lot. So it's that, the, the reworking. So as you can see on the, the change order, we basically had to add one step in order to get out to the back parking lot the way, the way it, it is now and, and meet code requirements. So the modification of the layout is six hundred and twenty-four dollars and then the additional handrail is another three hundred and fifty dollars. So that's one thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents. So we, we've talked about this before. I just want to clarify, you know, what exactly is going on here and, and this is your decision.
To rewind, Mr. Lesko at an earlier meeting had made a motion that was passed unanimously that we were not going to pay anything to correct the contractor's erroneous work on the steps coming off the south side rear of the town hall. So as a matter of process, folks were challenging, why are we paying anything?
Why bother the vote?
I'm sorry.
Why bother the vote?
Well, well, so, but what, what I'm hearing is, what I'm hearing is that the work that is on the table in this change order was not due to our current.
Contractor.
Contractors' error, but rather it was work required to meet code.
That's correct.
And so, and, and in the end of, at the end of the day, we're going to meet code. And it was not an error on their part in that, about this metal rail or this last step. Is that?
That's correct. The contractor, that was, that was not their responsibility.
I don't buy it. I'm sorry, I do not buy it because it was told to me right at that meeting that they messed it up. The contractor, the subcontractor messed it up, plain and simple. And now you're telling me, oh, no, they didn't do it? People have to have a little accountability, including us. So I am not going to pay that bill. I am sorry, I will not. As it is, Phil already put blacktop down there, which wasn't required. So that's an added cost out of his budget. I'm not paying, you guys can do what you want, but I will not sit here and tell taxpayers because subcontractors mess things up and, oh, well, we'll just take care of it, we'll bury it somewhere. No, I'm sorry. I have a little bit of faith in my, my town. So I am not going to, I am not going to sign my name to this, no way.
I don't believe the contractor, the contractor repaired what he screwed up.
He wasn't supposed to repair.
Let me speak.
Right here, I got the minutes, we approved the minutes. Ed, you want to see what you said? I'll tell you right with, okay?
Let me speak so I can finish.
Selectmen Lesko moved that the position of the Board to take out the stairs completely.
Right.
Remove them completely, the walls, the whole thing, and build them the way they were supposed to be built. At their expense. And I'm, I'm not buying it. I don't buy it.
The contractor, when we, when he jackhammered all the steps out, he took all the steps out and he had to raise that, that landing up, okay? The cap is, it better the, the way it is right now, it's better than what it was because the way the, the water was going to drip off and run off and it looks better. He, I understand that part and I understand where you're coming from, Jan. But my grief with this is the architect, it should be coming out of the architect's pay and not the contractor suffering for this because the architect should have known what the law was, okay?
I agree.
He should have known that the railing went on there and he should have known that you couldn't put a stairway out into a, a public road area or a walkway out directly into the public walk area. So I, I'm agreeing with what you're saying that, but the contractor, that's not the contractor's fault. I think he took care of his problem, but the architect created this problem and that's where we should be deducting from his pay.
Okay. Have him pay the bill.
I just want to clarify that. I'm with you, but I want to make sure that.
Send the architect the bill.
I don't want to blame the wrong person.
And also, I want to build from Phil for the blacktop we already put in.
Well, we would have had to pay either way on the, the way, well, there you go, from the architect. I mean, because he's the one.
Let him pay for that too. I mean, the guy was, he spent enough of time here. I'm sorry, but I'm not, I'm not. Again, accountability.
I guess.
Means a lot to me.
Absolutely. And I guess what I would like to do is get the architect in here and discuss this with him and what he's going to do.
Send them the bill, let it.
Okay. Because these are, these are his problems and more and more, when the architect screws up, they still get their contract, they still get their pay, they still get all the extras and they get additional percentage on the extras. So in this case here, if he screws it up, he ought to be paying for it. And I agree with that. So between the contractor and the, and the architect are two, two different things, Jan. I, I don't want you to blame the arch, the contractor when it's the architect.
Well, I heard at first it was the contractor that didn't go by the print.
Yeah. Well, and he did, he repaired that, he, he took care of that.
Well, so he messed up as well as the architect.
Yeah. Because the, the architect was trying to look at a phase three or four or five down the road and try to meet those grades and stuff, which he shouldn't have. It just should have gone just the way it is right now. That, least expensive and that's, that's what should have happened. And he should have known that it doesn't go out into a public way because it says in the code book that you can't proceed with a walkway out onto a, a road.
Well, can we parse this? One, I'm accepting what Paul and Ed have said that it was, it was not the contractor's error to correct this problem, but rather it was an architect, the architect's issue. So we, this work has been performed, correct?
Correct.
So we, we owe this bill. So can we go ahead and approve this change request to take care of the contractor who in good faith has done what we've asked to do to make the place code compliant? And two, pursue some recoupment from the architect regarding the error?
I, I think the motion to, to approve this bill, but then a second motion to deduct it off the next bill the architect submits for his pay.
There's a process on how that, how you do that and.
And let that be into, let that go into a, a question here.
Okay, well, I think, I think we'll.
I'd make a motion, send the architect the bill and see what he does first. I'm not, don't bother paying it. Send it to the architect. That's my motion. Don't pay it because you'll never get the money.
I don't know what the protocol is on, on that.
That's my protocol, send him the bill. He's the one that messed it up, send him the bill. Why are we going after the taxpayer all the time? No way. I refuse. Send them the bill, that's my motion.
We've got, we've got, we seem to have two motions on the table.
What's, what's the process? What's the process on issues with the architect?
I, I think we need to have a discussion with him.
Table it for the moment? Have that discussion with it?
Yeah, I think that's.
Come back?
Thing to do.
We'll be back on the, what, nineteenth?
Yeah, the nineteenth is the next meeting.
All right.
You can table it. I'll bet the pals don't, I still won't pay for it.
I understand.
I'm telling you right now.
But we'll, we'll get it clear as.
Yeah. I mean, I would send him the bill and say, hey, look, you know? The town can't afford to keep paying for somebody else's mistakes, plain and simple. That's like me going out and saying, let's go buy something that we don't need.
No, no one's disagreeing with that.
I don't want to blame the contractor over something that wasn't his.
Well, the thing was, he was.
He corrected his error.
Well, he corrected it, but again, he was at fault too, which brought the bill.
No, this, this is the architect that we're talking here, so I don't want to, I don't want to blame, put the blame on, on, you know.
Bring it back, we'll, we'll close on this next week.
On the nineteenth.
The nineteenth, one way or another.
Motion to table, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to just add one more thing. When we were going through these contracts, I made the comment that at the end of the contract, they had to have the job done by a certain period of time. And I said, why don't we put a stipulation in there at a fine of a hundred dollars a day? Okay, and everybody said, oh, you can't do that. All right. But other people are doing it. And what, what happens now is because of all the change orders, everybody jumps on a change order. They get paid for the change order, the architect gets paid for his share of the change order. And if it goes over the certain amount of days, there's no, there's no repercussions for them to, for going over to getting the job done on time. So to me, if you had a hundred dollars a day, that comes out of change orders and that helps us. So I, I really want to emphasize that if we do this again on another project that we, we stipulate in there always that there is a, a dollar figure in there that's paid to the town of Hatfield if it goes over the amount of time allotted.
Typically, what works best is if you put in a monetary incentive to finish early as opposed to a penalty for, for coming in late. And what you end up doing is getting into a big to-do, pointing figures. And don't worry, they have good attorneys that can come up with a hundred reasons why it was our problem that they were delayed on such and such a matter and it.
Yeah, it's, it can get, it can get sticky.
I, I hear what you're saying. I don't think they're that far off however.
But like Jan says, the town, the taxpayer gets screwed out of this every time, okay? It's, it's not, it doesn't benefit us in any way. So I mean, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, okay? So.
Point made.
I, I think that should be really put into, I know if I'm sitting on anything, I'm certainly going to push for that stipulation.
Yeah, I mean, it's perfectly legal. I've done it many times, but it is, you know, but I've never had an issue. But I know people who have and it can get bogged down in a legal fight.
We just don't pay the last bill. I mean, you hold the money on, on the end, we hold, we hold that, we don't have to pay the bill. That's, that's up to us.
All right, so we're.
I'd like also on the, for our next meeting, I'd like to request an updated either spreadsheet or something that how much extra these, these two projects have cost over and beyond what we originally went a bit out for.
I have no idea where we're at.
Well, I'd like to see.
Is this correct?
Those are current. No, both projects are under budget.
Phase one?
This is the very latest update?
They can't go over budget because there's no money.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just wondering how much.
What Jan is saying is.
How much have we added to? We've, we've got a.
I mean, we were way, we're way under on that town.
We got a number plugged in of X amount of dollars extra for different things unforeseen, like the stairway or something like that. There's a percentage that was in there, like a five percent or ten percent.
Any project you have a management reserve.
On the Town Hall project, our contingency was like a little less than five percent.
Okay, but that's what I think you're asking for. What, what do we, what do we spend the money on, the five percent?
Jeff's got it all right there.
Do we have that here?
I got it.
It's not in there, no.
It's about one thousand, two, let's see, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, seventeen, about eighteen thousand dollars.
For what project?
This is Town Hall.
Okay.
And then on the Town Hall garage, five, six, seven, maybe eight thousand dollars.
Did they back out the generator?
Yeah, that's in there.
Six thousand off of that?
There are three change orders in the.
Okay, yeah.
You'll see, you'll see there's a credit on there at the bottom.
Okay, long as the credit's in there.
Five, five, five thousand, two point five and nines. We can get copies of these. It's.
We're trying, trying real hard to keep them under control on that whole thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
There's no question about it.
That, Jan has a good, good point. It would be very helpful if we kind of had a little sheet each time for these major projects, you know? Here's the schedule, where we are, cost, issues, something like that, or pending change orders.
I'll have updated schedules for everybody.
Okay.
For the next meeting.
And also a dollar figure on what we've spent so far on what change order.
It's all, it's all there.
Okay.
It's all there.
Yeah, we have, got funds remaining of both, both projects. There was another thing on Town Hall. I would propose that we table any requests for reuse of the facility, certain areas. You have in front of you a layout of how this current space is being allocated, but we're getting requests from various sources to use the space being vacated by police and fire. And I would just propose that we sit on those requests for the moment, for, for a couple of reasons. One, I think we ought to look at the, at one time, not just because someone sent something in, what are the requirements, all the requirements, and then make any kind of decision we, we choose to make. But not do that right now because you'll recall our variance that we got from the Department of Public Safety Architectural Access Board was hinged on, we were not, that both police and fire were moving out and those areas. and fire were moving out, and those areas, at least now, would not be occupied. So, they waived all requirements on doors and other architectural changes that would otherwise have been required.
So, the bottom line is, we're not going to do anything with those until...
So, let's table those for now. I know the rec folks have expressed interest. Was it Conservation has expressed interest to use it as an office? Planning Board has expressed interest to use it as offices? And I mean, there are other folks that would maybe like to use it as well. But I'm just saying, let's get this thing done and we can circle back.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think we really need to, you know... Once we get this floor squared away, we really need to look at the basement and think about what the requirements are down there and how to best allocate that space.
Well, I don't want to go back and reopen the variance thing again. We've got enough...
No, no.
I wouldn't want to see a revamping like we did out back here downstairs. No way. I just, after going through what we went out here, no way. This is way overkill for what we wanted. It's just way, 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 way over.
Well, is there a motion to table for the moment?
I'll move that we table.
A request for reuse of the space being vacated by fire and police in Town Hall?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
What I'd like to do on a little bit of discussion there is anybody that's interested in that space, that they give it to Paul.
Yeah.
Paul keeps it, and when we do bring this up for discussion, then he brings those letters forward.
Sure.
Okay? Put them in a separate folder or something, so we have it.
Okay. And the architect has submitted to the Architectural Access Board a response that was due one December regarding the handrails and counters, and we haven't, apparently haven't heard back.
We haven't heard back, no.
Okay. Do you have anything else on the...
I have nothing else on Town Hall.
Okay. Well, circle back to the key. Okay, we've resolved that whatever makes sense from a safety perspective and whatever, those folks who need keys can get keys to all offices? And was the question about DPW getting access? Was that...
I think that was the main issue, yeah.
All right.
The only thing that DPW won't get into is the Police Department.
No.
He needs a police officer to get in there.
That's just what we resolved.
Yeah, that's it.
No, you didn't hear me.
You're not telling... I'm against that. And the reason I'm against that is because if there's stuff in that Police Department...
Which should be secured.
It could be, but if it was sitting on a desk, that's whatever.
Shouldn't be on a desk if it's a privacy matter or...
Then that's a whole other situation. So, I want to be really careful. I don't want to get into a lawsuit and lose some kind of a criminal case that we did something stupid. Okay? Because there's no reason to have anybody have access to the Police Department without somebody being there.
There's no reason for material with social security numbers and/or investigative material to be sitting on anyone's desk, period. It needs to be secured.
Well, if it's not, but it happens on occasion.
Well, that's the Police Department's responsibility, and I'm confident they'll take care of that. We're talking about access to address leaks or shorts or...
Police are always around, always available.
That's fine. That's great.
So, they always have the key.
Then there won't be an issue if they're always around. We're talking about when they're not around, and DPW needs access to address some maintenance problems.
I truly don't believe anybody needs access to the Police Department, except the police unless there's an issue, and they're always there on duty.
Well, we've just confirmed with Legal because it was raised as a legal issue, and Legal has said it's... There is no problem.
I think we need to have a further discussion with the Police Department.
Yeah, I think Tom needs to come in.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Town Council's research was all that thorough.
I don't think he understood the whole thing.
No.
I think he understood it carefully, and the only law that applies has to do with lockups.
Yeah, the police claim that there are various laws, so I think they need to produce something in black and white.
Can we put Tom on the agenda next meeting and discuss that?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
I didn't know Tom had a law degree, but we'll be glad to discuss that.
I just don't want us to get in trouble with anything and then have something happen. It'd be awful.
It would be if somebody hurt in there and the place burned down.
That's replaceable.
Okay. Anything else on Fire Department?
Ed, do you want to...
Exit.
Still haven't got the exit.
I got a call from Mike yesterday. Did you go over there and take a...
I was there this morning. He said that he was going to call you again because he had some questions. Mike.
Okay.
Okay.
Not wasting time.
I'll go over there.
Yeah.
Did you go over and take a look at it? Did you go over and take a look at the drawing?
I didn't. He wasn't there yet, but...
Okay. Right after our meeting, I'll go over there and check.
He said he had some questions or something.
Because I want to get this thing taken care of.
Dyke Project, we taking care of... You're the sponsor, DPW. We had that discussion last time.
Okay.
With Conservation Committee, getting that moving, so we don't want to lose momentum here and miss this.
So, let me update you. I just received a letter from Comprehensive Environmental for the engineering services at $16,700. They did get the approval from the Conservation Commission, the local conservation, so they're set to go. There is money in the grant, the current grant right now, to pay this. So, I think that we should proceed and award them the $16,700 for the expansion of the project to include what was discussed. And we'll pay through the grant, and then he will submit everything to FEMA.
Okay, so what do you need now for next step?
I just need a vote that we're going to approve this $16,700 contract extension.
Is that contingent on all fees?
As far as...
All the fees, all the fees have... I mean, all the hearings and stuff have been approved?
That should be all set.
Everything's approved. They only needed the local conservation to submit a letter of support, which they did.
Okay. Then I'd like to move that we approve.
I have a question.
Well, I moved and seconded it for discussion.
Second.
Oh, okay. So, when the town voted on this project, you know, there was a certain amount of money, but we've only borrowed X amount of dollars. I believe there's still authorization to borrow another $24,000.
Correct.
When will that need to happen? I mean, do we have $16,000 now to...
There's currently enough money in the existing grant, because the grant was for more than the project.
Okay.
So, we can take the engineering class out of that grant.
Okay, all right. So, I know that... Because I was just talking to the treasurer yesterday about, you know, some of the projects that are going on, and, you know, when should he borrow, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's no rush.
There's no need to, no.
No rush, okay.
Okay, so what's... The motion is to...
To for the Connecticut River Bank Stabilization Enhancement Project Expansion Amendment Two for a cost of $16,700 for Comprehensive Environmental Inc.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's great. How many feet is that, this project?
How many feet extension? Was it 100?
100 or 160?
160, let me know if you see.
160, okay. Jericho Road. There were purported legal issues to be addressed. We got an answer as to the legal standard for maintenance. So, what's... Where are we now? We still need to answer the gentleman, Mr. Harlow?
Well, I guess, again, I want to say, you know, Stanley issued permits. I don't know if he has issued permits out there for those yet or not. I don't know if he can. I don't know if it's legal to do that. There's a lot of questions that are happening out there. So, if we're not going to put the road in, then I don't see how he can issue a building permit and have it safe. Because we can't guarantee that an emergency vehicle is going to get out there.
Well, the Planning Board has to determine whether or not he has adequate access. That's the Planning Board's responsibility. If they determine that it's not adequate access, he doesn't get a permit. But it's a town road. It's a public way. So, I don't see how they... The Plan... I don't see why the Planning Board would turn it down. But I think this, you know...
Because it's only a 16-foot. It's only a 16-foot road going down through there.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a bylaw as to what the width of a road is that you can build on?
Only a subdivision.
24-foot. You need a 24-foot road going down through to build on.
No, I mean, existing roads, not subdivisions where somebody's going in and building a road. I'm talking existing, only existing roads.
I don't know how that works. I really don't know how that works.
I would say no.
I don't think there is either.
That's all I know is Bill's big concern, the Fire Department, ambulance concern, getting down there and getting out. Okay, that's a big concern. And the road, if it's not passable, especially in the springtime when all the mud season is there, that's a whole other situation. So, we either look at that and spend the money to put a new road in, or we don't.
No one's... Let's get back to what he requested. He requested some tailings that you had.
He requested some millings. That's what he's requesting.
And he was going to do it himself.
And he was going to do the self-help to...
That was my understanding. But then again, my concern is, is when he's gone, what's going to happen? If he builds the houses in there, is the town going to have to maintain that piece?
Well, I think Town Council has given us an answer.
And the answer is yes.
Yes. We don't have to widen the road. We don't have to tar it. We don't have to... Just have to make it safe and passable.
If we're going to make that passable, is that what you said? We have to make it passable?
Safe and passable.
Then you're digging out two feet down, putting in a base, and then you make it passable. That whole road's got to be dug out.
Because right now, it's a nothing but a... In the spring, it's going to be passable.
That's all it is. You can't pass through there in the spring. Right. You've got to put a big base in there to make it passable.
So, I will get some cost estimates of what it's going to cost to do that, if that's the Town Council's ruling.
Now, be prepared to do it there. You're going to do it every place else.
Absolutely.
You know, we don't have money for infrastructure and looking at this whole thing, too.
Well, we will make some money on taxes for the houses, but probably not enough to support the road.
Well, it doesn't require us to pave the road.
No, basically, all we should do is just put in some good packed gravel and...
It's all it required, yeah. You can pass safely on gravel. Fill in the potholes. We do it elsewhere.
Yeah, but the potholes are not the issue. The issue is in the spring when the mud is there and you're two feet deep, and there's no way a truck is even going to get down through there. And when the guy can't get his car because he's stuck in the mud, who do you think he's going to holler at? He's coming right here.
Let me get an estimate. Okay, well, we asked for... There were purported legal issues. Legal has given us a standard to achieve. Doesn't say how to get that standard, but it says it'll be safe and passable.
I'll have a conversation with Mr. Harlow to see exactly what he's going to do down there. I mean, is the last lot sold? Is it not? I mean, I don't want to be spending money down there to improve a roadway that isn't going to recoup any town taxes if he just has a lot sitting there. So, let me find.
Didn't seem like he was asking for very much at this point.
Let me have a conversation with him. We'll try to put the fire out here.
Table this one again, but we need to close on these things. Mass Works Grant, I was watching the announcements. November came and went, and there was never an announcement regarding Hatfield, so presumably no answer is no for our mass grant application.
Well, they're being announced on a rolling basis, so...
Through November, it was supposed to be.
Yeah. But I think that my interpretation is there are still more projects to award.
Okay.
So...
The only concern that I have with that...
I'm not holding my breath on this, but you know...
Okay.
Well, the only concern that I have is the projects that have been awarded, there's some big projects. There's some big money out there. So, what's left in the pot? If they're going to keep rolling it.
Yeah, that was a concern. I saw two of them were $11 million. And earlier, when we went in with our initial, they were told it was far too high, and they were looking in the $1 million range for us, a million, million and a half.
Yeah, with the announcements that I've seen, it looks like every single one of those awards went to a city. I didn't see any money going to small towns.
Correct.
Now, there is a provision there that you ought to pay attention to for a small-town road improvement for safety.
Yeah, that used to be a whole separate program.
Well, that's part of Mass Works now, and we haven't taken advantage of it.
Maybe it's the time.
Jericho Road.
Maybe the...
All right, well, don't mean to...
Have we heard anything back from either Peter Coldcott or Stan Rosenberg with the letters we sent off to them? Anything at all?
No.
I thought I heard the shudder run.
No, we sent letters off. No, we've heard nothing back.
Do we have a response from them?
No.
That's what he said.
No.
No. Okay. Head on here, MSBA application. This is a Mass School Building Authority.
Yeah. In your packet are the cost estimates for the roof replacement and window replacement at Smith Academy. The complete application has been submitted to the state. When you tally it all up, both projects, the cost estimate is about $1.9 million, which is about a good half a million dollars above what we were originally talking about. I'm looking at those numbers, and I'm having a real hard time with them. It seems awfully high to me. But these projects, we'll go out to bid, you know, if we get the award, and we'll see. But that's where it stands at the moment.
Now, what are we going to do? Just the roof?
Roof and the windows.
And windows?
And doors.
Yeah.
Roof, windows, and all exterior doors.
Yeah, the roof is about $1.1 million. And then, yeah, actually, it's the construction cost is about 1.5, 1.6, and then all the design work is another $300,000 or something like that, which seems like an outrageous number to me.
The question that I have is the metal frames for all those windows over there, that's the common procedure for all the commercial construction, schools, and so on. If the windows glass is failing, why do we need to replace the whole frame? Why not just replace the glass that's failing? I guess that's my question. Why do we have to put all the windows in?
Well, I think... I was just at a meeting over there last week or the week before in the superintendent's office, and I couldn't believe... And it wasn't that cold out. I couldn't believe the amount of cold air that was coming in through the window. I mean, all the way around, all the way around. And, you know, there's sections of it that's blowing in.
Did anybody ever think maybe it needs new gaskets?
Well...
Okay. Instead of putting all the window in, how about a new gasket?
A little caulking, maybe?
You know, something common sense stuff?
I'll just tell you what Fran Goojen, former superintendent, you know, said at one of the meetings, that those windows were the cheapest things that the contractor could get at the time. They were crap from day one, and shortly after the windows... And shortly after the windows were put in, that company went out of business. So they were, they were crap from the get-go.
The metal frames look like other metal frames that go in the construction trade, okay? They have to meet specification. If the glass met specification, it's not the contractor that put it in, it's, it's the architect again that designed it.
Yeah.
Okay? So that's where the fault lies.
But, you know.
In terms of, in terms of schedule, the cost is about 2 million dollars, as Paul was mentioning. On the 29th of January, the MS School Building Authority has a session. They'll review all our paperwork to date. And every indication is we're still on track to be favorably voted finally when the town votes its cost share on this. Now, again, town has to vote the whole thing, the 2 million dollars essentially, and the reimbursement of the grant is about, what, 50.5% of that 2 million dollars?
Right.
It's, it's just under 51% that we get back. And so it'd be essentially a little under a million dollars for the, for the town, but.
Eat up all their school choice money.
No, that won't be school choice money.
You know?
I think the school is.
You're not going to get a roof and windows for, you need a roof every once in a while. It's, it's that time for.
I think the school is planning on using some school choice money on the project, but.
Thing is, to get another million dollars passed from the townspeople, I don't think that's going to happen. They can't afford the taxes with what they're doing now.
Then the town can pay a couple million to buy the windows and, and instead of getting 50% off, it can pay for the whole thing.
Are they using the windows, are all the window shades in now up at Smith Academy?
The window quilts?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 they were.
Okay, so that should be helping.
I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is.
If they're using them.
If they're using them, I can't verify.
Okay.
Okay, we have nothing else right on that, right? Go ahead, next reports, the audit.
Yeah, we received the draft audit yesterday morning. And it was submitted to the leasing company as well yesterday morning. I haven't heard back. So hopefully we will get squared away with the leasing company here, you know, within the next couple of days and we will be able to take charge of the vehicles. The, in an email from the auditor, on the free cash part of our contract with them, they still need a couple of things from the treasurer. And the last piece is the management letter, so we can expect to get all, I think we'll probably get the free cash number, you know, by the end of the month, beginning of January. I don't see the management letter coming until towards the end of January. But that's where we're at.
Did you have some comment on the?
I had a conversation with the leasing company yesterday that they are looking for a, the signed audit, for a signed audit.
Offer cooked.
So I don't know if, you know, I know that our treasurer has spoken to them, but the person that I talked to told me that they need a signed audit. So I don't know if he's working someone else there, or.
Do they, do they need the copy of the representation letter? Is that what they're talking about?
He just said he needs a signed audit report.
They want the whole booklet, the whole report?
That's the way I'm understanding it.
Maybe you ought to talk to the guy's boss. Okay, really? Because if the audit is done and it's approved, but it hasn't been put together yet, what's the difference?
No, it hasn't been approved. That's, that's, I think that's what they're saying. It's a draft. It's not, it's not an approved document. There's some signatures required, haven't been secured yet.
Okay, signatures, meaning departments' signatures?
Yeah, there, there's about four or five, that, that should be.
Oh, okay. So we're missing stuff then?
No, it just has to go through, you know, we've got the draft, it needs to be reviewed by the town.
Not an official audit.
The town needs to sign off on it.
Okay, all right.
That's it.
All right. Nothing.
We're going to move on this before Christmas?
Oh, yeah. No, and they sent, you know, one of the things that's required is a representation letter from the town to the auditor. So that's already been signed, and that went off in the mail yesterday. You know, the auditor puts all that in, the town will provide this, the town will provide that, blah, 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 blah.
Okay. There was a question in all that package about, do we want an exit interview from? Yes, we do.
Yes, we do, yeah.
Energy report, 16 December, I think it was due, or is due?
Yeah, well, I sent in a request to DOER to change our baseline year from 2008 to 2010. And I got an email from Jim Berry, the regional rep from DOER, telling me that that's been approved. I haven't gotten an official notification yet, but I got an email from him. So our baseline change now goes to 2010, which means we're going to need to try and hit our 20% reduction goal by 2015. The, I need to submit the annual report and a revised energy reduction plan by next Monday. It's all ready to go. It has to be submitted electronically. I'm just waiting on one number. Because I was able to get some figures from the engineers on the roof replacement for Smith Academy, because that project's in our, in our plan. But I couldn't get anything out of them for the windows. So I talked to the engineering firm that's actually doing the work on, on both the garage and the town hall, and they have the expertise to do that. So they have all the information to do some rough calculations. So that's all I'm waiting for. So it'll get submitted next Monday. It'll get submitted next Monday with or without that number. Jim had told me that, well, if you don't have it by then, just, you know, submit it with a footnote that, you know, you're waiting for additional information. So that's where we're at with that.
That's just on the windows, not on the roof?
Just on the windows, yeah.
They looked at increasing the R rating on the insulation for the roof.
You know, it's not.
Turned out to be a hundred-year payback for a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I don't know why the engineer on this project, it's not very complicated to do, but when I talk, oh, well, it's not in our contract.
Yeah, well, it's. Anything else on those things?
No.
I, I stuck on here, capital budget matters, just to, we'll come back and revisit this in detail in January when the Capital Planning Commission, Committee gets done with its work. But just a couple of things. We've got a number of high-ticket items out there. And I'm glad we got our bond rating improved now. We just talked about the Smith Academy thing, that's 2 million dollars. Now, it's going to end up costing the town a million if we, if we go this route, and not the two, but there's a 2 million borrowing upfront. The water transmission line is in, that's within the next six-year period. We had a shortfall, and we want to come back to that regarding the transmission line, given the fact of the $400,000 added cost to go underneath.
Well, they raised it, it was 300.
No, I added up the numbers on that sheet, and it comes out to 400.
They raised it to 400.
No, 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 it was, I don't know where.
It was 350 to start, I think, but then when he.
Yeah, well, it's 350 to 400.
Man, oh me.
They started out at 300. That's where they started out at.
I, I sat down and just added up the column and came.
As I did, that's right.
Came up to 400. So there's there, the engine two, the fire department's coming in for, it's what, 480,000 over this period?
Wait a minute, what was that again?
Engine two, one of, parked elsewhere.
I think that can probably be stretched out to probably another 10 years or eight years.
Well, the thing too is, I don't know what's going to happen with that place up here. Because that's a new owner. North Farms owns that land now. I, I think he's letting us keep the truck there, but I don't know if that's going to be a permanent deal.
Well, the thing is, with mutual aid and everything else that we have going on and access to everybody else, you know, I don't, I don't see, I think the, I think it's really got to be looked at.
Well, and, and there's more. I won't, and we'll, we'll come back to all, we'll sort it all out and figure out what it is we think we can afford and the best timing for that, and, and we'll put that forward, and the board will, will act and select and make the report to town meeting. The one thing I wanted to talk about today, though, was the interstate, the transmission line, phase one. As I recall Michael's presentation, he said we'd need that additional money to keep the workforce engaged to complete phase one by about the March-April timeframe, which means you'd have to have, if you're going to do that, you'd have to have a special town meeting soon.
To bore under the rule.
Yeah, to go, to take care of the, having to go under Interstate 91. So we don't have, clearly we don't have to decide today, but we need to think. Why can't we quickly about, do we want to de-scope phase one, fit the budget, whatever, where? We'll go as far as we can with what we have, period. And presumably that will be under 91 and under the railroad track and somewhere, but, but not over the Mill River and up to Chestnut Street. Or, and then put, tag that piece on to phase two whenever we do that. Or something else. Or, or go ahead with a special town meeting.
I guess I would like to put the state on the spot on this one, okay? If their bridge is not safe, okay, then we shouldn't even be going over it from Chestnut Street. Because you've got tractor trailers, you've got everything going over there. I would like to know, or at least get a structural engineers from the state, report on what? Why it's unsafe.
Well, it's not the bridge itself, it's the utility bay.
Right.
That's, has corrosion problems.
Is it overloaded? Is it because other people have taken over our, reserved for us?
Yeah, but don't tell them that, because you know what they'll do, they'll close the bridge. Done. We don't have the money, and then what? Now we're going to have to go all the way around. Or somebody uses.
But I guess what I'm saying is they're making us go underneath when maybe we could go over, over the top, over in the bay.
We tried. We asked that question. We said, can we suspend it until you fix the bridge? No.
What reason? Who's, who's giving you the no answer?
Came in right from MS DOT.
Just an outright no without any speculation or any facts?
They don't want it suspended on their bridge temporarily.
Put it on top of the sidewalk, nobody uses it anyway.
That's true. Anyway, we, I, we're not going to resolve anything today. I just want to alert that there's a whole number of high-dollar item projects out there. There always are, but it seems to be more than usual. And we need some early decisions about strategy with respect to.
And that's one of them.
Things like the root, the water transmission line. And there's some other things Phil has in there from DPW, like North Street. Do we do want to do that as one whole project? Do the water, sewer, road, and sidewalk all as one project? Perhaps achieve some savings by doing it as one? Or do we, clearly, then do we do the pieces that make sense in the sequence that makes sense? And those aren't cheap either.
Big projects.
Just, just a heads up, that's all. DPW, do you have something?
Oh, the only thing, I mean, we went through most of it, but the water transmission main, the project is ongoing. They've put in like 1,700 feet of pipe. They just, in the intersection of reservoir and Rocks Road moving forward. I did see some notifications for some blasting, so it will be obviously starting soon because the notifications are out there, so. But it's going pretty smooth, weather permitting. They're going to keep working.
What are they going to do with the route? They're going to crush it up there?
They're going to set up a small crusher, correct.
This issue on Woodward Circle, we're going to answer the mail here?
Yes.
Don't let, just don't let it sit. Okay?
Correct.
Paul?
Just a couple of housekeeping items. I'm planning on taking vacation the week of Christmas, which is the week after next, I think. And we need to set the Selectment's meeting schedule for the next couple of months or so.
Just, can we back up? We'll get to that in a second. Center School contract?
Yeah, that's in the signature packet.
Well, we, we voted it already.
Yes, you just need to sign it.
So we all just need to sign, so. Let, just for folks listening, that we have signed the contract using the grant that we received to explore potential uses of Center School and what facility requirements, improvements would be necessary to support those. So that's on track. Still no word, you want to say anything about operating budgets?
They are due next Friday.
Yes.
I have, I've only received one, one budget so far, so. They're all probably going to come in on Friday.
And HR committee, are they going to give us some input before we start?
Yeah, I, I haven't given any of that much thought, but I have within the past couple of weeks. And I want to get them, pull that committee together first part of January. Actually, I had a meeting with, oh, actually, there is something else I wanted to talk about. I had a meeting with Sandy Beldon last week, I think it was, or the week before, who's on the HR committee. But he is heavily involved with Habitat for Humanity. And if you're not familiar with them, they, they construct affordable housing using a lot of volunteer labor. They're pretty active in the valley. He's looking to find, you know, some property in Hatfield to build some affordable housing. In working with municipalities, they typically, typically are looking for the community to donate some property. So I had the assessors print out all the property cards for the town-owned property just to, you know, see what's out there. But if any of you gentlemen have any thoughts on the topic, Sandy would appreciate it.
I think most of our property, we, we've dissolved it all and put it on the tax base, the ones that we want to get rid of. All right, so, you know, this property that we have left, that's either wetland protection or reservoir water protection.
It's either the schools or the town hall or watershed land, yeah.
You don't want to touch the watershed land.
No, no. No, there were, there's about, I just kind of went through them real quick. There were maybe eight or so parcels, most of them pretty small, like half acre, third of an acre, that just seems to be vacant land, you know, it's, it's.
Is it landlocked?
It's not, it's not.
Is it buildable, put it that way? Does it have the frontage and the size?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the property card, I don't know. But if anyone has any thoughts?
Okay. Well, it would be helpful to know what the potentials are. What are the buildable parcels?
Yeah, well, I need, I need to, I need to look at them some more.
Maybe, maybe. Maybe Stanley can help you.
Yeah, well, that's a good thought.
We had this in all of the objectives for our direct reports. That is periodic reporting on their staff activities. And let's plan to begin that in January. Get the police chief in, give us a rundown, what's going on. Fire, what's, where are they headed, what are their issues? Ambulance, all, run through them all. Give them a chance to be seen and heard and inform the community as to what's going on in their area of responsibility. We just need to lock down schedule. We have another meeting this month, I think it's the 19th. And then let's just close out on January and February. Is it the first and third?
We should go back to the first and third.
Okay, that'd be seven?
Second.
Seven, January?
Second and fourth.
Not the first and third, the second and fourth, yeah.
Second and fourth, 14th and... And 28th. How's that look?
Perfect. We always change them anyways, so...
The second and fourth?
Well, no, the 14th and the 28th.
14th and 28th.
That's in January.
Ed, you're gone in February?
I'm gone in February, yes, but that's so, doesn't have a...
It would be the...
I might be back for the fourth, the fourth meeting, I mean, the second meeting.
11th and 20, what's it, 25th? How's that, Jan?
Yeah, well, I mean, if we have to change them, we normally, I mean, just...
Just for planning, just for planning.
Why don't you stay on schedule, the second and the fourth?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
You know, it's easy to just know that it's there, you know? And you put it in your calendar and...
You know, but I went back and looked over last year and how many times we changed from... So that's our going in.
It was a lot. Don't forget, we added, and then if somebody was going on vacation, we tried to accommodate them, you know?
Just for general planning, and then March, that would be the 11th.
26th.
25th, isn't it?
25th, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, huh.
So that's enough. Okay, and then you, you're going to get back with us the dates that we're going to meet with the finance committee on budget matters.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Have we had that opportunity to talk to... I guess you haven't picked up with Sean?
No, I sent Sean an email. I haven't heard back from him.
Is there any other business?
Couple of things in here. I mean, John, I guess there are deficit for tuition, transportation from school, like $29,000. That comes out of, I'm assuming we take some of that out of the finance reserve, right? When it comes to that.
That's a good thought. I like the way you think today, Ed. Well, right, it's an unanticipated expense. These folks moved into town after the budgeting period and chose to go to a vocational school and we owe...
It's unforeseen. I mean, I don't know if they can pick up some of this on their... On their account and some of it on ours or whatever. I'm not sure what he's asking.
I think he's just notifying. Just notifying.
For information only, okay.
Information at this point, but...
You know, it could still, it could change. But he's just notifying us that that's the status at this stage of the game.
And tax appellate, what, this is just for our information?
That's information, that, what, some legal expenses to date?
Unanticipated legal expenses. The hearing...
$4,992?
Yeah.
Wow.
It will probably be several months before there's a ruling. But the hearing's taken place. So that should be it.
Who's the attorney on this, on the tax appellate?
There was this package, notification from Mass. Development about property at 4 West Street. But I couldn't tell what they were doing there.
I think it is, yeah.
This is a notification from Mass. Development that the Mass. Development Finance Agency is considering approval of a revenue bond project to be financed on behalf of Partners Healthcare Systems Incorporated. And there's a whole series of locations throughout the state of Massachusetts. One of them was at 4 West Street, but I couldn't tell what...
What is being proposed?
What is being proposed there?
It's not clear.
All right, well, so it's not a nice new building?
No, I mean, yeah, the whole thing is rather confusing, to say the least.
Anyway, I'd move that, or is there a motion to forward this to the planning board for their consideration? They're asking for whether or not it's, their work is appropriate with respect to local and regional planning agencies. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, you're going to answer the lady on Girl Scouts and our web policy? Still no more word on FRTA? I saw something in the newspaper about FRTA and setting rates and...
Oh, for the next year.
And it doesn't look like they're doing anything near term. They're not acting very swiftly.
Well, we just need something from them by the time town meeting rolls around.
Well, for the operating budget, if we're...
Carol Benson's, I'm just wondering, we really got to make sure that that's a mistake or whatever on her zoning? So does Lydia know about this? Is she working on this?
Pardon me?
On Carol Benson's property?
I gave Wilma a copy of that yesterday.
For the planning board?
For the planning board, yeah.
Okay, but I guess my question is, if there's an error on the mapping, it goes back to Lydia?
Well, I need to get that to Lydia as well.
To see if it was voted at town meeting to change that back in '77 or whenever it was, okay?
Okay, well...
Because it was voted to be Zoned Business A, but it may not have changed on the map. I guess that's what I'm saying. So, and now it's back to industrial, which is wrong. So somebody's going to have to research, and I don't believe it was ever switched back because I would remember that unless it was something done that coincided with something else. The only time that we changed it was when we rezoned across from that area.
When did we resell across?
About five, five years ago, six years ago, back at that, next to Judge Prada's house, that development in there. We rezoned that area. So it could have got tied into that mess somehow. Okay, so somebody's got to do a little bit of research on that.
Okay, so there's a motion to refer this to town administrator to coordinate with both planning board and town clerk and see that there's a response to Ms. Benson?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any other business?
No.
Will we adjourn?
Unless you want to vote to send the governor a letter too?
I'm serious. About tunneling under 91. He's spending millions on his office.
Motion to adjourn has been made. Is there a second? Jan seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.